To reconvene our meeting, a work session with the school board. Thank everyone for being here and at this time, I'm going to turn the program over to,
Thank you.
To you.
Let me call the board.
But we need to call all the boards to order and I guess do we need another round call?
We're just okay. No, everybody's present. Everybody's present.
Okay. So, Board of Supervisors has been called to order and I'll let you do your thing. Nicole.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting.
There you are Calvin.
Did I just take it down?
No, no, I'm sorry Calvin, I didn't see it because it was down there.
All right, Dr. Allen, well, I'm just really curious to see what the [inaudible 00:01:39] that [inaudible 00:01:41] supporting that [inaudible 00:01:44].
Okay.
Hopefully, I would just like to say, even before we start, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors as well as the Board for coming out tonight to talk about needs to students. That's our purpose. And the one thing that I am sure is that there is no one at this table who does not want what's best for students. We may have different ideas, different approaches, but I seriously believe that everybody here wants what's best for students. And at the end of the day, I believe that we're going to be there. Having said that, Caroline County Public School is looking forward to working collaboratively to ultimately identify state and local facility commitments and funding sources. Outlines the school division's short-term priorities as reflected by the Board of Supervisors. You provide resources in align with previously submitted Board of Supervisors questions such as annex usage of demographic maps enrollment projections by school level for moderate and average and appraisal of summer. And finally, we will answer any questions associated with the fifth year twenty-six operational CIP program. Before we begin, Mr. President Vice Chair will outline our critical short-term priorities and highlight a note sheet that will enhance productive compensation and outcomes for the school.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Everyone, if you could take a look at the short-term, long-term priorities and options sheet that should be down in your folder. Either in the quadrants where you can take notes on moderate growth, high growth, any question and commitments and decisions that we may come to tonight. As was stated earlier, one of the questions that arose recently was for us to identify short-term priorities, which is divided years zero through three. As you can see on the top of the sheet, we have identified several short-term priorities to include in order elementary school capacity and Bowling Green Elementary and Lewis and Clark Elementary. Jar capacity or overcapacity at the moment. Next, middle school capacity, we want to make sure that we're in position to handle the anticipated growth by years twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Next, we have deferred maintenance needs to include our aging systems and infrastructure and CIP funding. And finally, we want to make sure that we plan some long-term solutions for both functional capacity and enrollment capacity. As defined below, functional capacity includes programmatic needs such as sped services, sped services, English language learners, intervention and remediation, mental health services. And enrollment capacity is defined as students in the seats. So we want to be well positioned to accommodate both of those capacity needs. If there are not any questions on this particular sheet and our short-term priorities, I will now pass the baton over to Dr. Hubbard, who will share with you the annex building reuse assessment. Dr. Hubbard.
Good evening. Ms. Vaughn. We, of course, are gratitude, the opportunity to sit together and discuss pressing to more of our community. I'm going to address questions that were asked in regards to the annex, AKA the old Caroline High School. The purpose here is to really to evaluate the feasibility of the school administration reoccupying that facility and using it as a particular way of easing some of the pressure upon the elementary school. We evaluate the feasibility of converting the old Caroline High School annex into the new school board office. The assessment was conducted by R.R. M.M. As many of you know, the original build on that facility dates back nineteen thirty-nine. It is like that, so you can play nineteen thirty-nine. Over the years, it has housed the school administration, the Governor's School, alternative education and athletics. The building currently is showing serious age-related deterioration. Several structural accessibility and safety systems are outdated or non-compliant. Some facilities like gym and locker room remain in limited, very limited use. Renovation requires significant upgrades just to meet minimum code and ADA standards. This thing layout is intended for a modern [inaudible 00:01:49]. Renovating the building would still lack performance and efficiency of a new facility. Renovation cost approaches the cost of new construction. Long-term maintenance remain high within older building. New facility offers better long-term value and operational efficiency. In layman's terms, it's going to cost us more to renovate that building than it would to just build a new building. And in some instances, I think it's difficult to say, the renovation will cost more than the voting board in some elements. So renovation is not a wise thing, it's not recommended. Investments should be directed towards a newer, modern facility. Potential sale of the annex could help with the bond for worse [inaudible 00:01:55]. I think that answers the questions that presented the school working group as well as the Congress that made previously with regards of the administration being moving over to the [inaudible 00:02:05].
This is a time to questions. So it's not efficient for men to be there, but it's okay for Governor's School to be held in that building and other activities.
No, I asked that very question. Now, the Governor's School is utilizing just one more of that building. And it is perhaps the best space inside that entire structure for them to be in. Ideally, yes, we'd like to move them out of that facility as well into a more modern, perhaps, facility to enhance their instructional opportunities. Yes, if we could get them out of there, we would. Reality is right now, this don't have that.
Dr. Hubbard, is this? Is this the short-term? This is your short-term response and long-term response?
This is a response to your most question about utilizing the Caroline High School as short-term administrative.
So you said the building cannot be used at all as a short-term while we look forward to long-term solutions?
That is correct.
You're saying?
Play with greater detail, absolutely. So to go to Ms. Vaughn's question first and then to be back to Mr. Underwood. CDGS has been in that building for a number of years. It predate my leadership and I've been here for nine years. If someone to come and request a programmatic placement within that building, I would deny that request at this point. We want to maintain CDGS. We have been doing some temporary upgrades that allow them to maintain that location, but we do need to move them out. It is not ADA compliant. We obviously have ten point nine million dollars worth of renovations that would need to be done to that building in order to operationalize it as a joint location for CDGS and the school board.
But is that short-term or long-term?
There is no ability to have CDGS and central office staff in that building at the same time as a bridge option. One, there is not sufficient space, but secondly, it is not code compliant. We could not get to the second floor. There is no elevator and there is no ability to accommodate anyone that has any sort of disability. But it's also true of the first floor. We have to work very carefully with our students. For example, we have a student right now that has had knee surgery. We've had to make accommodations for that child to get in and out of the building. So it is not a viable option. It's also not suitable currently for us to simply move into. You would have to spend an enormous amount of funding to get it up to here. So we can't lift our work today and move into tomorrow.
I'm not sure. So basically, you're saying it's not an option?
That is correct.
Correct, that's what we're saying. Short-term, long-term, it's not an option.
Correct. And do you need to move CDGS out?
Okay.
I have to go to [inaudible 00:02:11].
Mr. Vaughn.
When you say renovated annex cost is ten million, new construction cost is twelve million, what are you talking about for new construction cost? Like what are you, what are you, what are you talking, I mean, that's not a Wisconsin elementary school, correct?
No, no.
No, thirty-one thousand square feet.
From that question over to Mr. Prost who's here today, he's the CEO, President of R.R.M.M. And he can outline for you what that twelve point six million dollars would be. It's a comparable building to what is currently there, but it would be code compliant and of course, a modern facility, but these are a little different now.
Yeah, so the new construction cost represents the same square footage as the existing building with the thirty-one [inaudible 00:02:30] two eight hundred and twenty-one square feet. Built brand-new to code today. And that's about at about three hundred and seventy dollar a foot cost versus the ten point nine, is that about three twenty?
[inaudible 00:02:36].
But the superstructure is really a full reno and old [inaudible 00:02:42]. That answer your question?
Yeah, I just, so you're saying that you would build, I mean, so you're saying that the short-term is to build something new temporarily, is that what you're saying?
No, this has nothing to do with short-term and long-term plans. This is simply addressing the Board of Supervisor's suggestion that we moved over to the annex. We wanted to help you understand that this is a building that in the facility condition in that study was rated as four. And we wanted to have deeper detail as to why it's not a viable option to be considered for short-term plan. Okay, and this is the reason why.
That's what I, this is what I needed.
Yeah, okay, great, I love that.
It might be more helpful to, whenever we are asked as a firm to look at recommending to an owner renovate versus build new, we have this guideline of seventy-five percent. If you see seventy-five percent of the cost to renovate a building, then it is always our recommendation to really look at building new. Because you're putting so much money into the existing structure, [inaudible 00:03:07]. And then you still don't have any idea what some of the unforeseen's are in that building that could come down the road. So it's the kind of threshold that we look at, if you're at thirty, forty percent, we should be saying renovate.
So you're saying it's kind of like fixing an old car instead of buying a new car?
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question? You were talking about leveling the building part of financing project. How much does that building worth?
That actually is a resource that's coming up. Could you pause that question and make note of it on your questions?
I forget, so if you got a number, you can tell me now.
David to stay.
Yeah. Just tell me that one number now.
The appraisal is three point five. But you have to understand what Ms. Rattelli and Miss Sears will be highlighting regarding the appraisal. We have a total amount for the baseball field, for the annex and for the school board office collective property. And then we asked for the appraisal company to parcel those into three chunks so we knew what each of them could be worth if we were doing some strategies that require them to be separated. So we have all of that data for you.
So, on this section where it says condition assessment, cost perspectives, and it's in yellow, and it has the five thousand nine hundred and eight square feet for the baseball practice area. Is that included in the renovation figure that you came up with? Or did you base it just on the square footage of the building?
Yes, ma'am, that is included in the entire square footage of the building.
It's a baseball practice area, but that's okay, I just needed to know, thank you.
Approximately forty-five are tied to central office, but not all of those employees are, they're at a.
Office.
Exactly, a lot of them are itinerant, meaning they really are in the school, but they come back because that is their office space. And we have some options that are the six to eight instructional specials, but they're in the building during the student hours and they come back for me.
It's not a concept of whether it was a hundred, whether it was fifteen.
They're great questions, so thank you. All right, I think we're ready to move beyond. I'm going to you. And so looking at the movement, it's a graphic that outlines. You can see the key down in the bottom of it, so we raise the [inaudible 00:03:33]. So I thought this was a really good question around that, [inaudible 00:03:38]. I want to give you an opportunity to just look at that. Also on the map is places where our current [inaudible 00:03:44] are. And then the background color [inaudible 00:03:48]. Totally not this far from the enrollment. The other part of this handout, on the back side, is the demographic study. It's my [inaudible 00:03:58]. The backside of this handout looks back at the graphics and the numbers that we should usually share. I know that there's been some conversation about whether certain [inaudible 00:04:03] for example, did that come into fruition? Did that improve it any now? All of the talking about that and [inaudible 00:04:10]. Where are we looking at? And so all of this information is on one page for all. So I wanted to answer that question and give you that data.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Allen, so, so these are all the students who are attending the schools, including pre-K, correct?
Is pre-K in this sheet? Yes. One data point that I think would be [inaudible 00:04:53].
I just, we don't know where those pre-K kids are.
We do not have a standalone map yet of solely pre-K, but we are working with the [inaudible 00:04:57]. I'm building that and as soon as we're able to get pre-K only, we will absolutely share it up. What I will tell you is that we have wait lists at all three elementary schools for pre-K. I think it's important to be aware of those numbers associated with those wait lists. Bowling Green Elementary School for threes has three on the waiting list and for fours has two on the waiting list. Madison Elementary School for threes has one on the waiting list and for fours also has one student on the waiting list. Lewis and Clark Elementary School for threes has thirteen on the waiting list and for fours, there are twenty-two on the waiting list. Now, that is not an indication of every party that is demonstrating interest. These are vetted families that are eligible should a seat open or we have the ability to add seats or create a locally funded pre-K class. These students would be eligible, we've already gone through their [inaudible 00:05:03]. So it gives you an idea as to where there's greater demand for that resource.
Can you, can you give me the enrollments of Head Start and pre-K total?
Yes, we have two hundred and twenty-five preschool seats and that is a compilation to Underwood of Title I, VPI and Head Start.
Right.
Does that help to increase the early childhood special ed as well? Early childhood special ed.
That total fund is about a million seven? I think you get one point two.
Three million dollars.
It's over.
Total pre-K program, the amount that local contributes is about eighty nine.
We go by eight, yeah.
So it's about three percent of that total three million plus.
The presentation that Dr. Mudd did at the last meeting, the numbers, and I think you gave it to us on a sheet earlier, but it didn't add up to three million, it was, what were we missing?
I will turn to Mr. Mudd to answer that.
I think it was one point two million from, from the federal, from the federal, there was a two eighty, there was two eighty-two, there was eighty-five from the local match. So can you, the numbers that you gave us, can you?
In your, in the packet of my remarks.
Yeah.
In that presentation, and I'll just call the numbers out.
Yes.
Head Start grant is one point two million.
Correct.
And change.
Right, yeah, just.
The in-kind requirement for Head Start is two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Head Start.
And that contribution comes from?
Is the in-kind requirement. So it's services that we provide that are already part of our [inaudible 00:05:18].
It's good local, local. Your local match is eighty-five.
Local save.
Local match is eighty-five.
In-kind, yeah. Head Start requires no, requires no local match, no additional local match money that is contributed for Head Start. On the VPI side, it's six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The in-kind requirement with VPI is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And the local cash match, there is a cash match, VPI matched to eighty-nine thousand. And then there's three more figures. There's Title I, two hundred and twenty thousand. The federal funding for the early childhood special education is twenty-one thousand. And then the state local funding to support the CSE is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Now, good. So you see you have three million dollars, it's rounded off for these two hundred.
Twenty-five.
Two hundred and forty-four kids?
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Two twenty-five. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Are things at two hundred and fifty-two, three and four?
That's like the early childhood special ed. The two twenty-five is VPI, Title I and Head Start, those additional students are the F E kids. Sorry about that. Look, Mr. Underwood, I want you to know, I saw you writing those numbers down. Within that document that we just received, if you turn to the slide that says funding stream, all of those numbers.
Yeah, I have those numbers somewhere.
Three million seven thousand dollars. We've got the exact dollar enough in that.
Right, okay.
But in terms of local cash match, we contribute eighty-nine thousand.
So, so, so the pre-K Head Start program. Funds itself, there's no, there's no money from K-12 money that goes into?
We are required to give an eighty-nine thousand.
I know, I know, the match.
And then we do in-kind. Our services that are already invested, we're able to share with, with no hardship upon us. Yeah, marks like a lot of in-kind.
Absolutely. So for instance, utilities, we're paying electric for the buildings, we're paying for the entire building. Another one would be the principal, principals in the building, no matter if you have those children there. Resource teachers, we're paying for those, so art, music, B.E., those students are getting.
So just shared services are already available.
Yeah, shared services are already in place.
Does it also include transportation?
Transportation, we're already transporting buses on the routes, they're getting on the same bus as the route.
That's Head Start.
Special transportation.
We do, if there are early childhood special ed, we do, if not the parent is responsible for transport.
For three.
For every year.
So the fact that it creates overcrowding has no bearing? You say if we're providing the service, that's like saying, I can, I hate to say this. If I have a can of sardines that I can get twelve in the can and I pack in another twelve, I can get twenty-four in there, but it's not. It's, it's not, it's not a good fit, you know? So I'm saying, this is, this is my issue.
Again, where you are.
My, my issue is this.
Correct.
I believe, and that's why I was telling Mr. Taylor, we, Mr. Taylor, like we, we probably spend hours on the phone. If I have K-12 space available for pre-K and Head Start, I am saying, use the space, use the facility, use the water, use the gas, use everything available. But I want to make sure my K-12 kids are comfortable and that the three million dollars that you have for Head Start and pre-K. It builds you a program that students are comfortable and taken care of as well, that it's able to stand. That, that's my concern and my issue. The, what I'm hearing from parents is that my, the building's overcrowded because the little ones are there taking up the space when there's no space. So it's creating a crowding issue. Granted, and, and pre-K and Head Start are absolutely important programs and anyone who says they are not, I think that that's foolish talk. Because they were put in place and have been in place for years for, for students who are not K-ready. But I, but I want to make sure that the students that I'm telling taxpayers to give me your money, I'm saying that the facilities that we have from that tax money, that is, is above reproach. Because that's what I'm responsible for. Now, you, on the other hand, you've taken the responsibility for Head Start and pre-K. So that's your issue to fix as far as I'm concerned about what they do, where you want them to be. I just want to, I just want to be able to tell my K-12 parents that, or the citizenry. We have funding for ninety-five kids from the government and from the, this and that and the other, but we have a need of three hundred. I'm asking you as a taxpayer to give me two cents so I can fund this program. So I can say that the money that I'm giving to the K-12 is divided equally between all of the staff, all of the teachers, all of the support, all of the programs. So then I can look at this program and say, it is self-sufficient K-12, it's self-sufficient pre-K, and these are the numbers. That's what I look for and that's my issue.
I absolutely understand the platform that you're sharing in relation to K-12 and average daily membership is funded for K-12 and not pre-K. I do want to point out that we ran the numbers and I just, you know, Mrs. Stevens has them off the top of her head or in front of her, but I'll say it out loud and you can hear Jack. We ran the numbers specifically for Head Start to look at what we are getting for people and it actually exceeds what we're getting for people for ADA. So we are extremely well assigned. I wanted to say it was over twelve thousand dollars per student. I wanted to say it was over twelve thousand dollars per student, you can certainly interject, for Head Start. And so I want, I want us to consider that three percent of the three million, seven thousand dollar budget that we get from the state and the federal government has the local match requirement, which equates to eighty-nine thousand in in-kind. If we don't do that, if we don't provide eighty-nine thousand in in-kind, we lose the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, or we should.
Small price to pay.
Nine hundred some thousand dollars.
Small price to pay for, for the money, yeah.
But we also then strip our community of an invaluable service, of which, if you look at, I mentioned this at the last Board of Supervisors meeting when I came to the podium. If you look at our community health assessment data, we are a daycare desert.
Right, yes.
We have waitlists, we have families who can't access services, and they are reliant on the school division and the Board of Supervisors to help them, help their children have a level of readiness to enter kindergarten.
Right.
And that is our collective responsibility to do, to our community.
Right, right, and for me, as a supervisor who has a district that's, children are fifteen, twenty miles from a school building in a household, it's even more difficult for us to take advantage of that. That's why we wanted to look at the hot map to say, where are these kids really coming from? And is it a disservice to the children who are coming from Port Royal for, to try to find daycare or try to find preschool for those children? Because the parents can't drive to Bowling Green, then drive back to work, or to drive here, then back. So it's a convenience factor as well, and we recognize that. So I just want to make sure that everything is on par for everyone, that we can actually take advantage of whatever services are available.
I do want to consider, and we haven't gotten to the short-term options, but I know a suggestion has been made that we look at the current school board office as a Pre-K center. So that would be located, of course, in the Bowling Green zone, which would be associated with Dr. Hubbard and the real estate. The other option, of course, is the property acquisition that we've been discussing with you for a bit over a year now. And that actually falls in the Madison I zone, which would be Mr. Thomas and every Mr. Fortune. And so that would be where the majority of our waitlist and where our clustered student base fall. And so that would become part of that, that branch plan, either of those two options. And we'll get into that with greater detail. But, but there is a firm belief, and I hope I'm not inappropriate in speaking on behalf of the board, presumptively, but there is a collective belief that preschool is a non-negotiable. And that is something that we collectively committed to continuing. And we will continue to, to move forward with that now.
Can I have one thing to that, though? It's my understanding, and I can't release any names because I'm not part of the NDA, but that, that property's under contract.
That is not accurate, and we have been in communication with the property owner as well as the real estate owner, and so we have information that we're able to share with you.
Okay, let's go, that's not what I've been told, but.
I have, I have a very, just moments, let me get this into, just a very simple question. Talking preschool and kindergarten. What ages kindergarten or Head Start is what age? Kindergarten is what age? When do you consider preschool?
Yeah, absolutely, great question. So we service two to four-year-olds. We service three-year-olds that will be turned, two-year-olds that will turn thirty by September thirtieth in Head Start, BPI, and Title I. Early childhood special education can take two-year-olds that are legitimately two, even, you know, just to post September thirtieth. So we service two to four. And then kindergarten, you can start at the age of four, but you have to be five by September thirtieth. I'm going to turn around and hopefully get a wave, wave nod from our several grandparents.
They're, they're doing that.
Okay.
So, so let me just bring this out. First of all, as, um, I get, I, I took the tour, I saw your need for classrooms. But I have a big problem with, with you saying, and we all know, we have a lack of daycare, but if the school's providing free daycare for two-year-olds and three-year-olds, why would I want to start a daycare center in Caroline County?
Sure.
And, and, and that's, plus, you're saying now we need to add on, you don't have enough classes at the school for next year. But there must have been four classes full of teeny-tiny little kids who should have been, I'm sorry, that should have been sitting, playing on their mother's lap or their grandmother's, or they should have been in a regular little daycare and, and you should concentrate on the kindergarten kids. I love all my children, but how can we attract daycare centers if you're taking all the, the young kids that are mostly for daycare?
There is a large population that has gone on served outside of the number you share. The demand is there. All you need to do is to sit with a parent who is struggling to identify daycare. We are legally obligated to service two, three, and four-year-olds that have IEPs through special education.
Special education, I understand.
And we believe with the educational system that it is essential to provide access and opportunity to those that may be economically disadvantaged or have other hardships, may not have the ability to be on a parent's lap because the parent is working three or four jobs, or is incarcerated, or has another scenario that's preventing them from being the present parent that they would choose to if they didn't have other variables that they are addressing. And so we are not providing daycare. We are providing instruction, teaching and learning, social, emotional growth, physical support through medical appointments. They get dentistry care, vision care. We are providing a wealth of services to these students to help them have a level playing field that others enter kindergarten all met with. Because their homes, their income level, their, their parent's ability to service them looks different.
So how do, how do I sell someone interested in, it'll be a daycare center as far as getting.
Who incentivizes it by, who incentivizes it by enticing them the business mindset on why it is profitable for that daycare to operate here? So there are businesses, business means that we could potentially use to incentivize. Now, that's going to be a challenge because, as we, as we pointed out, it is, you know, we are in a desert. And in the studies that recently provided, we'll see it's bad. And the best way to, to try to entice them is offering some business incentives to help. I don't think it's fair to suggest that we have, we, and the school have a solution to that. We, we know who we're trying to address what we have. And I think aggressively, both boards agree that if we have the capacity to serve these children in that way, then damn it, we need to do it. And I think as we're going forward, yes, we have to figure a way out to do it financially. But it is, it is the way I think we're.
Your key word is capacity.
Yeah.
Exactly.
If we have the capacity.
Mr. Thomas, I think what I'm hearing are four different areas of questions, and I think it's all good discussion. The first was in regards to funding. Are we taking funds from K-12 to service Head Start, Pre-K with all the different programs? And so I want to make sure that we didn't gloss over that and that you have the answer to that question.
I think she said no, I think she said actually that.
The eighty-nine thousand.
That's the in-kind money that, that we, and that's a match that we give the eighty-nine for the in-kind services money that you receive of X number of hundreds of thousands, correct?
Well, they're two separate.
I know they're two separate, but in order to have one, you have to have the other. In order to get the in-kind, in-kind money, in order, in order to get the match money, we have to ensure that we're doing the in-kind services.
Yeah, and the in-kind and the facilities.
That's correct, so I'm saying, right, so they are tied, right.
I think briefly here, there may have been some misunderstanding that of that three million dollars, that when you look at that three million dollars, that's three million dollars that could be wanted.
No, 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 no.
Maybe not your question, but that is the question that I first.
Okay.
It's a good question, to make sure we have clarity.
Right, so you're not borrowing from one age to get to another.
Yes, so we can address that.
Yes.
The second issue that I'm hearing is with the capacity. So are we serving Head Start, Pre-K at the expense of K-12 from the capacity standpoint?
That's correct.
That's what I'm hearing. And I think we, we are addressing that. The third piece was about location and accessibility. So was your point, was your question answered?
Not yet, I'd like to see the, the map that you had, that's what we're waiting on, on the hot map.
And I think the fourth thing is just the, uh, what is age appropriate to enroll children into the institution of services? And I think that there may just be a difference.
Well, I understand, I'm a mother of a special, special needs child. I mean, he's fine now, but we went through a lot. And so I understand there are special needs. But how do you, if you're opening it up to every person with a two-year-old, how do you make sure the ones that need the extra help are the ones that are getting in? Yeah, getting the spot.
Because that's, that's where we're missing the element, okay? So it's not, not, it's not that it's open to all two-year-olds in the sense that you're drawn a parallel to daycare. Because there is an application process, there are criteria for federal programs. So I'm glad that you, you told us more about what your thought process was here. So it's not one and the same, and they're not in competition. Good question. And then on my last topic, how to be attractive to seniors here. It is possible, from a business standpoint, to come into a community team, to see the needs assessment, to see the health assessment, and then to see the shortage of daycare being provided, it's a bold one. If you want to have a daycare in our community. It's, it is a business, I agree with that. But I appreciate the question, and I wanted to make sure that we, our.
Right.
Still circulate in the same, because we didn't answer that.
Thank you very much.
Have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Thomas, thank you for having me.
Of the, of the two hundred and fifty-two Pre-K kids that are here, how many of them take the bus?
I don't know that question, and I will turn to my experts that are in the arena every day. How many of our Pre-K students ride the bus? Is that readily available data for you, or is that something we need to get? My, my, I can still, the three-year-olds who not riding the bus, your question to provide information.
Is it three-year-old?
Three-year-old. So if we move to that number, I'm going to, we're going to get it.
Which would be?
I was thinking approximately fifty. It would be a lot.
Okay, I just wanted to figure out how many were, is it transported by their parents? You said that was a priority versus how many were actually using the bus?
If they're riding the bus, they're riding the regular route, they're not on a separate bus.
Oh, that's fine, I just wanted to know how many were on the bus.
Is that what you were talking about, that you're meeting Monday about needing seating, seatbelts for those?
Monday, during presentation week?
Yes.
And that's why Head Start enters the kind of, which is where they're sprinkled on all of the buses.
Yes.
Have a reasonable, we have seatbelt for every student.
Correct.
So we apply for a waiver with Head Start, they approve it every year.
That's, so it's, okay, so it's not a problem, okay? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get the end of that, some of that.
Do you have additional data points to share before we can potentially depart from Pre-K and move into the appraisal?
I just have one more question on Pre-K before you go.
Yeah, and then I'll give you my.
Okay. So you, you're, um, average cost per student for Pre-K is thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars? Is what it adds up to be? Is that what you're telling me? That you're spending thirteen?
We were saying the Head Start funding per student, the ninety-five students, was around thirteen thousand. Head Start amount of money that we're getting on the grant board.
For ninety-five kids, but you have two hundred and forty-four.
Correct.
That's just, that's the funding that comes from Head Start. We were looking at what the per pupil cost or, or expenditure that we receive is for Head Start. So we just thought that was an interesting data point, that the funding we receive is actually of a greater amount than what we receive to our normal average daily membership.
You helped me, yeah.
Just starting with, um, you're speaking about the ninety-five from Head Start.
Correct.
But you are missing the Virginia preschool.
The BPI, right.
The number that.
That's six hundred and some thousand, six thirty-eight, I believe.
You talk about the total number, that's two twenty-five. You got to back out the ninety-five from Head Start. And then you have BPI, where you mentioned Title I, that's in here. And you got to back out Title I.
Right.
Then our, and that's the difference of two twenty-five to the two fifty-something that Mr. Thomas.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll leave this topic. No, no, not complicated, just, you, you see different numbers in different places, that's all.
Ninety-five.
That's your funding number, right, for preschool.
Right. And what's the difference between ninety-five and twenty-five? Is what you're getting. You have to look at all the programs that we.
All underneath, right.
Head Start has its own one, BPI has its own one. And I think that's where the number.
But BPI is not Head Start.
Correct.
That's not Head Start, so.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking at, and see, this is what, I disagreed with, um, the, the braided number in terms of funding. I like to see a breakout of what each program is costing. First, so that way I can, that way I can unequivocally say to anyone who asks me, I can unequivocally say, Pre-K students cost us X number of dollars. Students who are in our, in our Head Start program cost X number of dollars. Students who are in our K-12 program are allocated or averaged X number of dollars per our budget that is funded by the state, some federal, and your local. Right, so that's. Right.
It is in this presentation where Head Start is separate from BPI.
Right.
If you look in this packet, that's what it provides.
Need to see it.
But that is not the unique, the show, I'm telling you.
No, 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 I'm not saying uniqueness. I'm just, I'm, I'm not looking for uniqueness, I just want to be able to be answering the question.
And I'm telling you, that number should fall out.
Funding, I think.
Yes, that's all.
So in physical years, twenty-four, because those are physical years, twenty-four numbers for Pre-K, if we take those out of our actual revenues for the entire year, it's sixty-nine million dollars, a hundred and one thou, that you can say is K-12.
Sixty-nine million?
Um, I think that, I think that's your introduction of another variable, that's not it. I think the question is, we can say Pre-K. We've been, as I, I, I don't know. When I'm hearing Pre-K used in this sense for their question, it's not considering all of the toll brands and is looking at Head Start and Pre-K, and that's where we're looking. I know we can, yeah, sorry. As far as I'm aware, that's come on, it's like, yes. Use that.
Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you for clearing that up. I'm good.
So now preschool, two more data points for you just to be aware of. What I think demonstrates the community need is long, which makes it very difficult to relate to your question about the need for daycare. When you look at the demographic or live birth data, and we only have it to reflect in the report from 2019 to 2022, there are 1,363 children in Caroline captured in that live birth data that are zero to four. So we're only serving the 225 that are in our traditional 3K programs plus an additional 20 some in special ed. So that leaves, goodness, what is that, over 800, 900 kids in zero to four that are not in our program?
Thank you. You've restored my faith in parenthood.
The second data point that I think is interesting is that of our current kindergarten class, right, and I don't know the total number of kindergarteners, maybe Mr. Mudd, you can tell me that. But of our total kindergarten number, 58% of them did not attend.
That's all of them, preschool, right.
And so many of that, Mrs. Ross, who provided us with that accurate number, didn't have any 3K experience or daycare experience, which can, not for all, but for many, put them at a significant disadvantage as they enter kindergarten with no social exposure, no academic exposure, and lack of access to medical providers that they can gain through our school service.
Is that what the data says, or is that your opinion?
That's what the data.
Now, seeing your question bubble again here.
And those numbers.
No, no, I'm talking about academic success.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Sure, definitely a trend associated with those that have 3K, and it's nationwide. Those that enter kindergarten with any type of daycare, 3K, in general, have a far greater success in transition into kindergarten and are reading by third grade at a greater level than those that do not enter with that.
I'd like to challenge you on some of that data.
Sure, we can talk offline about that.
Let's talk offline on that.
Definitely. I'll make a note.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. Just to terminate finishing my portion.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we move into the summary of our findings that were done. That were done on March 24th of this year. So we looked for market value as a field, and the number provided for that would be 4.5.
How many, how many people do you mean?
So if you guys also look to the back page, but are still in thunder. But you look at the former high school, the B for that one, they said we can get as-is, market value is 3.5 million. The admin office building, we could get market value of that is 3.75 million dollars. Also, we brought the package together in one, and we got the breakdown. So individually, depending on what we decided to do collectively, we could also, the market value for baseball field would be $865,000. So we got 4.5 for Lotus, the old ladies' school. 3.5 for the former high school. Admin building, 3.75. And then the baseball field would be 865,000. The acreage data?
Well, certainly. So what we had to do in getting the appraisals, it is one total acreage package. So the appraiser took the land and went straight back to the back of our property. So he took the school board office, which is approximately 11.0 some acres. Then he took the middle section for the annex, it was 7.0 some, and then 5, going back to. All together, so those are hypothetical boundary lines that they drew on there just to grab the market value.
Baseball park and Lotus Academy, that's 16 acres.
16.9.
And we received these.
And how many searches?
Yesterday or Monday, Monday. So they're cut off.
If I could interject, Mr. Thomas has to leave. Mr. Underwood has to leave early, so I wanted to give him a chance to have a last comment before he leaves.
Yeah, I do. I have another one minute, 7:30. But I appreciate it facilitating. Appreciate the answers and, well, I'm sure we'll find a way to make some things work. Some things will, some things won't, but we're gonna do the best. Thank you. Thank you.
Before you depart, if you'd like to move over, we'll provide you with all the other material so that you can take it with you.
Sure.
Okay. At this point, we'll go ahead and we'll roll into our last resource.
Well, I don't want to leave the ball field yet, because I got a number of phone calls from people very upset that the ball field would be sold. And that was a lot of donated work for all of that. And their estimation for repairing that is really low. So I just don't want to lose sight that people have heard that that is for sale and are not happy that that's even being considered to be sold.
Sir, we are not putting that out to the community as a definitive option. We simply are gathering all data for board request to know what our properties are worth. That's why we also wanted the collective acreage to be parceled. So if there was discussion and passion in our community guiding our decision-making, we would be able to respond accordingly. And we have also received calls regarding that same topic, Mr. Seeley, and we have quickly dispelled them. But I do want to share an interesting soft qualitative fact that occurred, which I think is interesting and we would have to delve a bit more deeply into. We hold student advisory committee meeting every quarter, and we have worked on facility topics with our students. And at the fourth quarter meeting, which consists of about 30 to 40 students from the middle school and the high school, we had Mr. Caldwell running a small group, there were four rotations on facilities. And we had the students create, responded collectively to, if we renovated CMS, what would be needed? If we built a new middle school, what would you like to see? If we renovated the high school, what would be needed? If we built a new high school, what would you want? Very interesting discussion from the high school student. There were a number of answers. One, they provided greater athletic fields. That is not very surprising to any of us. But specifically, the baseball players that were present spoke directly to Mr. Caldwell about their desire to have the baseball field at the high school, but they actually don't feel included. They feel excluded. That they don't believe that there's the same level of pride in their athleticism because they're not, you know. I've never heard that perspective before. It's only from the mouth of two babes, so we have to take it with a grain of salt. But I think we also need to look at what is our student voice saying? What is our community voice saying in relation to all of our decision making? So just a point to put out there. I know that that has some legacy component to our community, and we all value that as well. And I certainly drive by and honk and rave to all of those volunteers who are leading in and lifting up that work on a daily basis. So just want to put that out there. There is no plan at this time to sell or demolish the baseball field. But if the boards collectively decide that is the direction that we would like to further investigate, then of course, the community meetings that we've been hosting would involve that conversation. Just one other point, because I think it's important for the public who's watching. Because this is a big conversation, and it's a real conversation, we have been pushing towards gathering data. I don't know how we can talk about possible funding sources if we don't have. Because it's a question that comes up and that's having to answer. So this is by no means to say that anything will be sold or that all of it will be sold. This is fact gathering so that we know what we're working with and we can explore options and be informed. Because as a homegrown girl, there are lots of sentiments and feelings, and when I hear it, I don't know. I don't know that I want to hear the rest of that conversation. But it's a necessary piece to the puzzle, so that is the purpose we have. Because I'm with you, Mr. Seeley, folks are panicking in certain circles. So we have to make sure that this data going out is positioned appropriately.
And that's.
Yes.
On that same note, did the Robert Barnes apartment, including part of your headland? Is the whole unit still part of?
Well, it is part of the appraisal.
It is part of the appraisal.
Absolutely.
I thought that was.
Actually, it's the board.
And to your point, that was a question, what property do you have? These are questions that we can no longer base upon historical knowledge and what's in my brain and hearsay. We need to move to the place where it's documented so we can begin. I appreciate that question. Yes.
Yeah, because I thought it was the county, and the county might have been. I thought it was the county, so. It's a school, that's fine.
And it's definitely the school.
But I would just add one thing. Given what Mr. Seeley says, and I understand where you're coming from, because I remember a few years ago, when I was on the neighborhood, when this building was talked about demolishing. And.
That's a bad end of the story.
Yeah, no, that's a time that the school board moved this building at that time. And it was talk of demolishing this building and maybe building another school here or whatever. But there was a lot of objection, a lot. And we listened to that objection. We listened to that objection, and you see what we had. It's a nice building. It's serving the community. And it's another example of how we do this. And so, as has been said, we're not making decisions tonight. We're looking at options, and we're talking about what probably can we do to address. We will.
Mr. Stevens, to that next, with the final piece of resource before we turn it into approach for the actual short-term options.
This spreadsheet is being able to drive and help consist with our short-term versus long-term. So at the moderate growth rate, we're looking at each of the schools. And the sheet is, of course, in a square, under for each school, that says additional required classrooms. If it is a positive number, then that means we are in need of a classroom now in that building. Okay? If it is a negative number, that means there is available space in that building currently.
One question. Capacity of Lewis and Park is different than what it used to be.
Yes, so as the demographic study was completed and the facility assessments were completed, the capacity did change from prior years in looking at how the classrooms are currently utilized with the spread classrooms and the capacity in which they are and everything. So all the plans are being based on the capacities, based on BDOE standards of the buildings that are marked in the facility condition. Assessment and.
It's about a 90 student difference of what it used to be.
Another contributing factor is we received class size reduction fund from the state. That amount of money that all three of our schools received impact K through 3 classrooms. The amount of economically disadvantaged student populations within each of those buildings determines the class-to-student teacher ratio. So for example, at Lewis and Park, all K through 3 buildings must be 24 to 1. Correct. 24 to 1, no larger, right? No more than that. The minute one class hits 25, we must add an additional class. If we don't follow that criteria, we lose funding. No, sir. A teacher. A certified teacher, yes, sir. So we have that occurring at Bowling Green. They're continuing to enroll students. As a matter of fact, when we did our first tour with Mr. Long and with Mr. Taylor, Principal Huxell had just enrolled, over the week and a half prior, 12 new students. We had to add a third-grade classroom because we hit, we exceeded that class size reduction for Bowling Green, which is 23 to 1. Their economically disadvantaged members higher, so their student teacher ratio is lower. As economic needs grow, should they grow, that ratio can go down to 19 to 1. So that is the recommended build, because as your community changes its economic decrease in household GDN income, you will find yourself having to service 19 to 1, 20 to 1, based on class size reduction. So we received well over $1 million for class size reduction fund. Looking at margin, she knows she's the number.
She's approximately 800, 800, thank you.
And so we don't want to lose that money, because that pays for multiple classroom teachers. So that is also a contributor to the change.
I was.
Good question.
I tempered.
Yeah.
Because I knew that, I knew what the number used to be.
So thank you. Follow up, Dr. Keller. Follow up on that question.
Yes, sir.
You're saying, I'm going to restate it so that you understand. You're saying if the median household income in Caroline goes down, then we would have to have a lower number of students per class. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and to explain that a bit more, doesn't necessarily have to go down. Let's just say we don't rise to what the new communicated.
Average, normal standard, whatever they use.
Correct. It's based on your eligibility for economically disadvantages supporting service, or for you and reduce large population, food stamps, things of that nature. So as that number changes, if we remain below that at a high level, and then that number continues to increase, then we have to have smaller classes in order to get the class size reduction funding. So we stay within that. It's also good practice when you have students with greater needs. I call them that, promise students, having smaller class sizes is obviously beneficial.
That could roll in, no matter what.
Correct.
We agree.
Good question, Mr. Borhan. Thank you.
So Mr. Ross will be able to explain in our option. This is one of the driving data points that we have in showing what we can do within 0 to 3 years in each of the buildings at that level. On the back of this form, it's the same problem, but without high progression. The elementary school combined, you would all be above capacity. And then the middle school, you get 27, 28, because when you're at that capacity level, and the same with.
So I do believe that concludes the resource period in terms of us providing you all the artifacts and documents that I hope have helped answer some of the questions that have been posed. I don't know if the board shares would like to just take a five-minute stand-up in scratch, and then when we come back, we'll turn it over to the options, or I'll follow your lead.
I give my body.
And then from top to bottom, you'll see at very start, there's a long-term plan. Goes over three-year period that's based on the enrollment protection. There's a longer term plan that goes from three to ten years to profit. So, starting with option 1A, looking at the purchase of building P, 1A, is 13.5 million, Renovation of the building for various spaces include pre-K, pre-K for 3.3, a little over 3.3 million. The Lotus Academy for about $485,000 in school board office. Renovation got about 1.4. This department, we would also house for about $300,000. And the Chastity Bay Governor's School also for 580,000. The transportation building in the short-term, we would recommend some very minimal deferred maintenance to be completed on this. This is a $200,000 allowance for predawn of the room repairs to get through that short-term The middle school would have an addition that I think we've seen before in a previous presentation for a very small addition of four classrooms totaling just under 4,000 square feet for about $2.5 million. And then the deferred maintenance numbers that you've seen before, $6.48 million. And that's for years of 24 through 28. That's on the deferred maintenance schedule for the middle school currently.
And Mr. Pross, if you don't mind me interjecting, I believe the middle school hits capacity in year 2028. And that is why it was included within the short-term range, just for clarity.
That's correct. The high school does not need renovations in the short-term, so we've just listed the deferred maintenance from the deferred maintenance schedule and facility condition assessment for years 24 through 28. And then the next three buildings, with the relocation of many of these functions into the vacant building P, we're able to then defer the deferred maintenance or avoid that deferred maintenance. As well as you can see, there's a property sale values that were discussed earlier. So for Old Lady Smith Elementary School, the Lotus Academy is, we could avoid deferred maintenance over that same 24 to 28-year period, almost 9.5 million. That would not need to be spent. And then if the property and building is sold, in addition, 4.5 million, that can be turned back into a source capital. Same with school board office. A deference of deferred maintenance or avoidance of deferred maintenance totaling 5.3 million. Land and building sale we discussed earlier at 3.75. In the annex building, same scenario with deferred maintenance avoided, we'd be about 6 million in the land building sale, about 3.5 based on the three. And then the maintenance building function moving also to that vacant building, we would avoid about 160,000 in deferred maintenance. So you can see the totals with regard to the total reconstruction, renovation and purchase lease price, 22 million for option 1A. Total deferred maintenance costs, so about 13.5. And then total proceeds from the sale of each of those properties combined is about 11.75 million for a total outlay of 20, just under 24 million. But we've also then avoided 21 million in deferred maintenance. Option 1A moving into the long-term plan, building P would already be acquired. We would need to, based on the enrollment projections into the future, build a new elementary school, about 450 students, which is also, I think the option that was shown previously, just over 30 million dollars estimated on school-owned or county-owned property, so no land acquisition cost for that. No new school board office because that would be now housed in that building, building P. But Caroline High School would need a seven-classroom addition to accommodate growth at just under 7,000 square feet for about 4.4 million. And then a new transportation building, roughly 15,000 square feet for about 7.2 million. And then you can see there's some deferred maintenance happening. For total of 21 million, these two, 65 million total over that 10-year period with an avoidance of 22 million in deferred maintenance. Stop for a second, see if there's any questions. There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, it's a little tough just getting all the numbers now to follow. But you're talking about 22 million in. talking about twenty-two million in deferred maintenance. And how does that deferred maintenance affect the appraisals of the building?
The appraisings were requested for market value, as did.
As did. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, option one B, very similar setup, but this is a lease-to-purchase option on that same vacant building. And pre-K would move from the existing elementary schools into a simplified school board office, or the existing school board office. So, the renovation would include the Lotus Academy, four hundred eighty-five thousand, school board office renovations, again, at one point four million, maintenance department, and Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, but the pre-K would not be done in building P. The lease, estimated lease expense over a three-year period, are about three point two million. The short-term plan, we still put the two hundred thousand dollars for very short-term repairs to the roof of the transportation building. Caroline Middle School addition, and deferred maintenance would be the exact same as in option one A. Same with Caroline High School's deferred maintenance, and option one A would be the same. And then the same for Lady Smith Elementary, Old Lady Smith Elementary, deferred maintenance avoidance, and land building sale as well would be the same. But the school board, the existing school board, the school board office building, would now incur the deferred maintenance costs from twenty-four through twenty-eight, including renovation to the existing school's kitchen, which has been, I won't say abandoned, but taken out of rotation, and needs some significant upgrades. And then on top of that, converting the school board office to a preschool, to taking the existing spaces that are in that building, making sure they're suitable for pre-K, that cost, excuse me, would be about three point one million. And then the annex building, avoidance of deferred maintenance, and the building land sale would be similar to one A, the same with the maintenance building. So, again, the new construction, renovation, purchase lease costs for option one B, eleven point seven, deferred maintenance, eighteen point nine million. Proceeds from the sales drops a little, because the school board is not being sold, so it drops from eleven point seven, and in option one A, it's eight million, in option one B, with a total avoidance of deferred maintenance, well over fifteen point six million. Moving into the long-term, three to ten-year plan for option one B, we've included now the purchase price for the vacant building that's being leased for three years, after that three-year period it would be purchased, with thirteen point five million estimated purchase price, a new elementary school that matches option one A, Caroline High School building addition, that matches option one A, also, a new transportation building that matches option three. Overall, total combined for the two phases, is low at seventy-seven point eight million, sixteen point six million in deferred maintenance. Any questions on option one B? All right, option one C is a lease-to-purchase option as well, but moving pre-K into building P. So this mirrors, to some degree, option one A, but it's a lease-to-purchase option versus purchasing outright up front. The pre-K renovations are similar, one C versus one A, all of the, actually, all the costs are very similar in the vacant building between one A and one C, except that you have the lease costs in three-year period, the lease of the building prior to purchasing, you have the small allowance for transportation building, one C as well for deferred maintenance, priority deferred maintenance, same costs for the middle school, same costs for the high school, same deferred or avoided deferred maintenance in value for the sale of Old Ladies Smith, the same avoidance and value for the sale of the school board, similar to option one A. Annex building is the same, all three options with regard to avoidance in the land sale, while the building maintenance, the maintenance. So, total new construction, purchase lease is about eleven point nine million, deferred maintenance thirteen point five million, proceeds from the sale is the eleven point seven five, for a total outlay of thirteen, just under thirteen point seven million, and an avoidance of deferred maintenance of about twenty-one million. Moving into the long-term, three to ten-year plan, option one C, again, the cost to purchase the building at thirteen point five, new elementary school to accommodate the growth in year three, at thirty million, and then high school addition again, four point four, and the new transportation building, and deferred maintenance, that's avoided, for total of just under sixty-nine million, and overall, avoidance of twenty-two million. Any questions? All right, so option two, you single, take.
I was just trying to figure it out, but I'm sure you got it. You've got three point two million for lease cost of the building. The monthly lease would be that divided by twelve, which is how much?
Well, it would be, that three point two million would actually be divided by thirty-six months.
Thirty-six, three years. Then you're going to get in the building for a thousand dollars a month, for three years, and still owe thirteen five after that.
Well, we would negotiate through that lease with the option to buy, that we would want the investment that was made during the lease period to be reduced on the purchase.
When, what you're saying, you're going to negotiate a lease for a thousand dollars a month?
No, sir. Take the three point two million.
Two million divided by thirty-six.
It's estimated fifteen dollars.
So what's that monthly number?
Runs about eighty thousand, eighty-eight thousand.
And that is with NNN, which means, I don't know, NNN, there we go, which means that we would be responsible for the external ground, and then, of course, just your daily maintenance of things that would go awry in the building, that all large-scale items within the facility would be the party. We would appropriate to discuss that, and be more friendly with each other, possibly in closed session. You can certainly follow what you want, desire.
We typically don't go into closed session without our turn.
My question is, is it wise to discuss particulars in open?
No, and I would reiterate, I made a phone call during the break, my economic development director has talked to the real estate agent and the buyer, and says they have a contract signed. So I, I mean, talk to you want, Mr. Wilson is in the know, he can't say anything, it's NDAs and all that kind of stuff, but there's a, I mean, it's, we're confident this is not on the market.
I agree.
Typically, closed session is the appropriate placement when you're talking regular tea skills about things that doesn't matter. And so while I think it's good for us to be aware and transparent, I still know that that's the appropriate thing.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
We don't need to.
Yeah, this is plenty for us to think about, we don't need to discuss anything more at this point.
I do think it's important, if you don't mind me making a closing comment, which is probably, we are aware of the NDA that you just mentioned, we too are in conversation with those same individuals, and most recently, as a stakeholder for us, and so, we are very cognizant of what's transpiring, but also have had the opportunity and have in-depth conversations.
I'm not involved at all, I'm just.
Sure, just sharing that, we would not be investing this level of time into this if we did not feel it was a viable option, but along with that statement, it does require movement at a pace that will require decision-making. And it doesn't mean tonight, it simply means, we don't have the luxury of time in general, but specifically, if we feel like this is an option that is physically sound, it accommodates our short-term needs, our long-term needs, and it addresses deferred maintenance, then we need to collectively have a commitment as to how to proceed. And that doesn't mean, obviously, taking a vote tonight, but it simply means, we have to move forward if we believe this is an option, and then we can get attorney at the mall. We don't want to invest funding into something that is not desired by both. I think that's appropriate, while we start getting to some sort of tier.
Maybe zoom to ten, then ask the county minister.
That's an option, but I also.
What did he say?
Tonight is, we walk away, understanding that, as a sport, that this is a viable option, and it's meeting the criteria that we have established in terms of how to move the boat.
And the only thing that I would add is, any decision that we made would be based on the fact that the information that we had was, if we find that some reason that's not the case, then obviously, it's not going to be a trucking. Any decision that we make tonight will be based on the fact that we feel that the information that we have here is valid.
Okay, once I finish, whatever, you need to make sure that you're operating in transparency as well, we should not give any particulars, and that's protecting Caroline County, and definitely.
Thank you, I think we'll continue with option two, Mark.
Who's on the roll, obviously? I've got one question, because I see Lotus Academy at the high school.
In this next option two, yes.
Okay, so it's only an option two?
That's correct.
Right, because it can't go to the new job.
Okay, so option two, because the vacant building is not purchased, you can still propose doing the two hundred thousand dollar allowance in repairs of the transportation building, the middle school would be identical to the first three options, but the high school moves from the long-term plan into the short-term plan dominantly because both Lotus Academy and the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School are not moved into the vacant building P, so we've got to find homes for those. And at the same time, the seven classroom, for economies of scale, the seven classroom addition, not needed at that time, the government would be done, so all the square footage would be built at the same time, you'd get the economies of scale. So that's at about twelve point four million, along with the deferred maintenance for that twenty-fourth and twenty-eighth period, that's six point eight million. Then the deferred maintenance avoidance, the land building sale for Old Ladies Smith, is the same. The deferred maintenance for the school board office, and the version of the school board office to a pre-K school, same as option one B, but then the school board would need to lease vertical office space somewhere else in the county, and that's estimated at one point three million dollars, which one thousand, seven million. And then the annex building, avoidance of deferred maintenance, and the proceeds from the sale of property, same as the previous three options, but because the maintenance building would not be, excuse me, would not move to the vacant building, they would incur the hundred sixty-four thousand dollars in deferred maintenance. So for a total, new construction, renovation, and lease, value of about eighteen point one, total deferred maintenance costs of more than nineteen million, total proceeds from the sale of properties, eight million, a total of a little over twenty-nine million, and avoidance of sixteen point five in deferred maintenance. Moving into the long-term plan, the new elementary school would be needed still, in dollar value a little over thirty million, but then a new school board office, since they are leasing space in the short-term plan, for about thirteen point four million, that would house both the school board office and the maintenance building function. The high school addition has already been done, in short-term, and then new transportation building, for a total of just under eighty million, with sixteen million, five hundred thousand in deferred maintenance avoidance.
If you think it's important to note that option two hinges upon, of course, being able to identify, that it's available for lease, and that promptly, that is not something that we have investigated in relation to space that would accommodate the board office, so that would be a joint venture, we would need to, of course, work with economic development and talk about what is out there that we could entertain for our mental property.
Okay, we first should report and talk about high options and low options. Some options, extended options, at this point, are the other question, either board member or other question, based on what we've heard so far, as it pertains to the different options that we have, would you like a few more minutes to look at?
What's the going timeframe to go now?
If you did a four hundred and fifty student school, you have that, what, fifty, six thousand feet, you could probably do that in eighteen, twenty-four month period, construction, and it's probably nine to twelve for design, and all the other.
About six fifty.
I'm sorry?
About six fifty instead of four fifty.
That takes you, you have the six fifty, so I think you have, it might add, it's going to add between nine, twelve, maybe eight, nine.
We started tomorrow, it would be twenty-eight, probably, before we got full up and running.
If you went eighty thousand square foot building, you'd probably say, just say, worst-case, one year for design, all this site stuff, and say, three, it's going to be three and a half, maybe four years, but I think you can get it done for you, designing and construction.
So basically, what you're, what you're saying, what I'm saying, and I agree with you, is we should probably start designing a new elementary school, right?
If you want to have it before you get the prux of the enrollment, yes.
I thought I agreed with you.
Ten does appeal, and.
Yeah, that wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you didn't do that.
We did not, and I can probably summarize without going through all the numbers for everybody, but really, the difference is, in high growth is, basically, the same four options and eight more plans, but the square footage is on the additions to the middle school and the high school, which is increasing significantly because of the high growth model. And then the. And then the duration in which we have to.
Mr. Cully just said that Pendleton is building three schools at 44 million. Just to give us a perspective. They're building three new elementary schools, Battlefield, Washington Henry and one in Beaver Dam. And the price to me at 44 million apiece. I don't know what student capacity, but I guarantee it's greater than 450.
Are the one that grows in the 650 capacity and that's 43,400.
There's no question. You know, well, which, which option does the school board prefer? Well, once we go through the freshman period, then we will go even and talk about that. Yeah. I mean, which, you know, which option do you have to prefer? You've had to tell you this for a while and a lot longer than that. Which one do you prefer? Okay. I will prefer to whole boys on the first. Yes. You want to speak to that?
Depends on how much money you're.
We didn't ask how much money you wanted to spend. He said, what was your preference?
More time. More time and more money. I don't know. And I, there's a lot to digest.
Have you guys seen this all already as a school board? Have you guys talked about these very numbers and all the stuff that we're looking at tonight?
We received it yesterday during our workshop, which was a public meeting before Monday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Monday during our public workshop.
So they haven't had time to digest it either.
They've had 48 hours more than you had, sir.
I'm just saying, it's, it's a lot and, and.
Well, let me just say that.
My question is.
Yeah. Well, and as to your question. Now, this is my personal opinion. I need to see what kind of commitment that what a supervisor has toward addressing this issue. I know what I want, and I can say that. But if there is no commitment, well, I would like to know what the commitment is as far as how we plan to address this. Are we going to come up with a figure tonight and tell us that? Are we going to say in the next year, we'll do this or the next three years, we'll do this? I need to know what I have to deal with. It's, it, I mean, it's hard for me, it's hard for the board to come up with a rejection or say we bought. But we don't know how much, what we're dealing with financially.
Well, give me your personal preference.
Yeah.
If you have all the money in the world, what would you rather do?
I would like personally, I, if it's available, I would like building P. I think building P is.
Well, which option is that?
One, one area.
The next of those expense.
No.
It's free out. But I believe that we can solve our problem with building P much easier than if we did not have that building. That building, we got, we got thousands of elementary school that do.
First three are all building P. This is the only one that doesn't include that.
We can take care of our transportation issue.
It's under contract.
We have 46, I believe, additional.
I mean, they're building it.
That we can deal with. We could have Lotus Academy students in that building.
You're good.
All right. Wait, let's say we do reference.
Yeah, I agree. I would, I had my druthers option one outright purchasing of building P for all the reasons that Mr. Tilly expressed. Including the fact that he'd be in a position to defer all of the maintenance based on, like we should say, properties. Also it gets an additional flexibility to partner with the county as far as space is concerned. You know, we, we have the potential ability to provide community space in and part of the county. And also there's a need to share space, space, if you will, per you guys' facility study as well. So it gives us a variety of options. I think along with same taxpayers and benefit on both boards.
Same. A big reason, everything they said, but it's really been, Calvin just touched on it, the acres that's available, that's fine use. What we could do with that, education, maintenance and everything else. That is, it's, it's right. It's location geographically speaking, at being at that exit. Without one and putting transportation there just seems to make the most sense. And that's where all the population grew.
For me, it's because its services are short-term goals, as in we can start to go quickly to do some of our problems. But it also provides ability for our long-term actions.
Yeah, so, I would begin by simply pressing, what is most going to impress their use? Near term and long term. I don't want us to be back here in three years renegotiating for another $10 billion because we simply don't have. In an ideal world. The money wasn't that certain to buy more real estate. Certainly a good thing. And I think it would address our immediate and long-term concern. If that building is built. It would meet our short-term needs, but I think it opens up some other challenges that we're going to have to address down the road as well. If it is not, then we're going to have to come back here and have yet another discussion on what we can do.
But that was, that was the follow-up question that I was going to ask.
In an ideal world, pressures aren't on taxpayers, pressures isn't on us, you know. Sure, the building needs to be, the building needs to be. So not a big fan of things. But if, if, if we have you going to purchase. Money's not an option. Certainly. However, money is.
And I would agree. I think that for me, I continue to entertain building P because it gets that swing stage. We've been through the discussions of we move this, we move that, then what, then what? And what we do know is that. While building, we need somewhere to. To bridge in the meantime. But I also like about that is that we're talking about the timeframe to build a new school, which is saying three and a half years versus the immediate need. I do think it's a real conversation to confirm if he is an option to not. We have discussed that, there's still needs to option two. Way it would be option three from the original. But hands in the mail of short and long term. I appreciate option one. If not, I do appreciate option two. But I do have that conservative view to say. I'm not so much concerned about the dollar figure. Can you hear me out with that?
Well, that was definitely a long pause. And, and, and I understand where you're coming from, Chris. I want us to have a discussion where we're saying, if we could do anything, what would we do? Then we understand we've got constraint. I bought a lottery ticket last weekend. I didn't win, so we're not going to be able to do any of those. What do we do if we can't finance 70, 80 million dollars? And what do we do if building P is sold to somebody else?
Me, what I don't want to see that's financially driven is trailers are back in my car. I don't want to see that.
Nobody does.
And as a taxpayer, I'm willing to put some extra money in that bucket to make sure that they're, that trailers are not a long-term solution. So that's my opinion. I paused with saying, and when I did the plan, money was not the driving factor because you have limitations at you. When you're talking about selling part property, well, we can do that. So from a financial standpoint. Is this sound to move this and move that and to exchange? So I'm looking at, does it mean that these are the students? Dollar figure is important, but it's not my property. And I know that may make you cringe, but that's my opinion. Something.
All right. The only other thing that I would add, but I didn't say. Personally, I'm not a fan of using the trailers and I'm not a fan of leasing. I feel like citizens will, will object more to leasing because it sounds like you're winning. And they're not going to know. And maybe we, if we go to that. We need to make sure they understand what, what leasing really means. When you put a figure out like that and you're leasing, I think you're going to get quite a bit of concern in the world. When you're part of the success.
And not only that, even if we were to negotiate a right of express refusal. We wouldn't be in a position to beat whatever comes into table. And of course, we need, we need to come together quickly.
Question, if I could ask you to pause on that, I think we're entering territory associated with what we agreed to approach a possession conversation. Thank you.
I have a question and not all choices because that'll come, obviously we need to get some more information. But if a new location is chosen someplace for a school. And we're thinking over, and I understand where there's a lot of growth. Are the, are we still looking at using the buildings that you currently have? And is that where students from my side of the county would be going? Are we going, are we looking at? What are we looking at doing with the property we have now? Because we have lots of property around there and I handed out some maps that I just got tonight. We gave one to Mr. Taylor. But have you thought about doing a educational academy using some of the lands that were bought years ago? And building schools there so that you have your high school, your middle school that you have now, your athletic field that you have now. But use the other land that the county bought and put buildings there. It's just an option to look through in case this property, you know, becomes a non-option.
Sir, that's a great point. We have not determined what will occur with any building that potentially is vacated. That is a larger committee conversation. What we did do is what Dr. Rollins fell indicated is that we wanted to make sure we had all property values that were known to us. So if that was a conversation we needed to have, we will sell this property in order to support this endeavor. That we were well equipped with that data, but no decision has been made. And indeed, we could choose to build on our current property if that is ultimately what is in the best interest of the option that is chosen between the words. So yes, that is an option. When we talked about the first four options that were more comprehensive in nature. We actually used the model property on the corner of Red Devil Jump and 207. Because we own that property. So yes, that mindset was absolutely at the forefront. We own that. We won't have to purchase property. That could be an area if we elected to use that. So yes, me.
Because it's a long haul from one side of the county to the other.
Absolutely.
And that is center of county.
550 plus square miles. So for those that are on the farthest part of the perimeter, it definitely is a haul.
Nancy, maybe you ought to ask Mr. Cully to get a list of proppers that we got from other people. I thought Common Church Station proffered a school site and I know Belmont proffered money to buy them. Leon, can you answer any of that?
Oh, Leon, I was here.
So for those who couldn't hear, Pendleton has proffered a school site. And Common Church Station, which is below route one or below 207 on route one, has proffered a school site. And Belmont, I remember had money that they put in their proper statement for the purchase of land. So we have other options when we start talking about you're designing this new school starting tomorrow, where we're going to put it. But, but that's just something we all need to have all this information to make sure we're going to make the best decision we can.
Point of clarification in relation to the Belmont proper. I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, I was sitting in the audience when there was a modification made to that proper. Was schools were removed and it was expanded to, to be perks and rec proper. So the usage of that Belmont proper has changed to my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So it would be expanded. Okay, great. That's good to know.
You're first.
Well, that's.
You're first.
Thank you.
All right. So, okay, we pretty much decided what, what we could do. And, and, and that's kind of why I'm here is, is like, what was the goal of this meeting? And, and to me, the goal of the meeting was to kind of figure out what the school board wanted, what they wanted to do, give us some option. Because quite frankly, we not in a position to borrow a lot of money. We have to figure out what to do, how to do it and how to fix it as quickly as possible. I talked to my school board representative about it and one of the things he mentioned was Bowling Green is way overpriced. You got to fix Bowling Green. If we could get the pre-K out of Bowling Green, that would help the overcrowding in Bowling Green. So short-term, is it possible to put them somewhere, those four five classes, while we work on these other things? Is that a possibility?
The same would be applicable to Lewis and Clark.
And.
Both of those buildings in that same fashion. And so we do have a temporary plan that could be put in place. And that consists of a wide variety of tactics, and I can share those with you. Of course, none of them are ideal, but they are options. Obviously, a purchase of a trailer is approximately $100,000.
Lisa, you're going to get up and give us that? Not this time.
Predicted along with others.
Okay.
So I thought this one might come up. So obviously we would need trailers at Bowling Green. We would need trailers at Lewis and Clark. We actually have a meeting with their HOA board tomorrow to really understand what is permitted on that property. And so we'll know more there. A trailer run for purchase of approximately $100,000. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind. We also add more so at Lewis and Clark, just with the location of art and music. Not ideal. And please, if you're listening to the art and music teachers, this is not a decision that has been made. But some of our resources would be getting pulled out of classrooms and put on a mobile cart. And they would move around into homerooms and service the students in the homerooms and we would absorb their classes temporarily. Which, you know, zero to three years is temporary to us, but to an educator, that is definitely not, you know, utopia for sure. We also spoke to Miss Long and I don't know if we've made any movement on this about Bowling Green gaining access to any available space here at the community center. And moving music and art or other spaces over here at the community center. So that we can create additional classrooms. We know already, we must have one more classroom next year. We know that. The class we added in November because we were over the 23 to one, only can post 12 students. Because it's not a full-size classroom. So we know starting next year, we already must run it again. But that was an intermediary, intermediary measure in November. Okay? We also, in our walk, talked about the library again, library staff. This is not a decision. This is really no box thinking. This is not a decision, this is really no box thinking. A temporary wall being put in the back of the Bowling Green Elementary School library, it would create a very long rectangular classroom, with the wall not being able to go fully to the ceiling. It would be almost like an open classroom model, and we shipped all the books forward, and we would create a classroom in that area. We also, as of course said, you know, we must begin building that new elementary school, must, of course, defer maintenance, must, but, you know, approach the middle school addition as well. So it'd issue in twenty twenty-eight. If none of the options are chosen, that is what needs done.
Well, I know the board that years ago was extremely pleased when we finally got people out of trailer.
Yeah.
It's so long ago, I think you might have been in school then, or you too. So we're trying not to do that, but understand this, we're getting this right now, and we're behind the eight years.
But one of our options that is planned for at Bowling Green Elementary is we did leave a knockout wall to add the six classrooms because we wanted to add those in twenty-twelve. No, it wasn't. It was my idea because you didn't want to add the classrooms in the gym at the time, and I got the newspaper out.
I didn't want to add the gym.
So we tried to do that then and didn't. But that is something that I think we could do very short order because we know it's there. There are probably existing plans for that. And the cost of that may be something that is not exorbitant. You know, one of our problems is, is that, and you all were there for the financial discussion, I'm not sure you were, Dr. Calverick.
Yes.
But our, but our ability to borrow is really hampered until twenty-twenty. And since we, we went ahead, the middle school's a priority, and the high school humidity problem was a priority. So we went ahead and did those projects together. And we're on right now, you know, we're paying, we borrowed ten million, and we're paying principal and interest, or interest only for another, well, right now, they have it out to twenty thirty-one. I think we're going to try to back that up into twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
Only ten years into the twenty-five million.
Right, and we're only ten million, and we're only ten years into the twenty-five years for the high school. So we're kind of boxed in in some places. But some things we could do short term, I think, is the Bowling Green addition could be done because we know what that entails and we had plans for that. So that would be a start to, and that would be, six classrooms looks like it would solve your problem for a very long time in Bowling Green.
I don't disagree with you, absolutely, but that is certainly not something that would be underway and completed by the beginning of next full year.
It could, it could be close, depending on, Mr. Forehand actually talked about at the last board meeting, hiring an architect to look at what we're taking, if we have the plans, the building department may be able to take care of that. So, yeah, we'd have to go to bid, but that would give us some breathing room, and we may be able to find the funds, don't know what the end of the year is going to look like, but we may be able to find some funds to actually start looking at building that, which would, one component of this would be taken care of in an elementary school, which is more central, I mean, when you look at your map, when you look at the Bowling Green area, I mean, it's two-thirds of the county. And keeping it more towards the center of the county keeps the transportation sort of in the same route, which is what I hear from folks, and I've got all the way down six hundred, all the way to the Hanover line, folks, that come all the way to Bowling Green. So I get the distance, and there's no easy way to do that. So Mike and I are scheduled to go look at Bowling Green, and I'm trying to get a set of plans so we can look at what that looks like and talk to the rest of the board at some point.
The same architect that did the high school?
Yes.
Can I ask you two things? One, can I ask Mr. Prog to talk about what the potential cost of six classrooms may look like in terms of square footage, of the cost per square footage? And then also, can I ask Mr. Cully for the stage of clarity for the boards and community to identify the amount that was borrowed for the HVAC and lighting project? Because it's been stated that ten million dollars was borrowed, but that is not our understanding.
I don't, I would have to look that up. I don't know that I would want to quote a number that was.
We brought over seven million dollars to the project.
Right, they brought money.
So it should be anywhere to three to four, just for clarity.
The project expense, what they're looking, what they're looking at is what we're spending, not what we borrowed. So when you look in the capital projects report in your board packet monthly, the expenditure on items is ten million plus for that project, but we didn't borrow ten million.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's still, it's still deferred, whatever we borrowed, whether it's four or six or ten, it's still deferred.
It's interest only, but we didn't borrow the whole amount because they had ARCA money or whatever the right acronym, a bunch of money in from the federal government.
Can I ask a question? And I'm just looking at some of the, this is the data I got from you guys. So I see the pre-K, like enrollment in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen is one twenty-eight. It kind of stays steady. Like in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, it was one hundred and two. Two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two is one nineteen. And then it really ballooned twenty-three, twenty-four. Where were those students housed before then?
Yeah, that's a great question, actually. So that was the year that we became the grantee for Head Start. And so those students that were never on our book were with Rural Family Development. They were the grant owner. They were a rental vendor to us. So those two Head Start classrooms, plus all of their office space, they rented from Caroline County Public Schools. Their program was separate because they owned the Head Start grant and placed at Bowling Green Elementary because they did not run their program in alignment with ours.
So all Head Start was at Bowling Green Elementary?
The Head Start. For Head Start, they had classrooms in Lewis and Clark, they had classrooms in Madison, and they had classrooms the first couple of years, they were at the school board office, two classrooms, and then they were moved to Bowling Green under Head Start, still with Rural Family Development.
Sorry, thank you for that. But that was only the Bowling Green students was at Central Office. But we wanted them back to the building because they did not have equitable access to services and resources in the same fashion that the other two buildings were experiencing under Rural Family Development. And when we became the grantee, that was a priority to us, to have them return to the building. And they're actually altered while Rural Family Development was still the grant owner.
So I know nothing about elementary education, very little. So in other school systems, in other school systems, is pre-K in with your elementary schools, they do? Or Head Start?
It depends on who the grant owner is, it depends on the model. So for example, and I'll turn the instrument to verify, that Hanover has the pre-K in their building. That's the model that's used. Spontaneity has pre-K in their building. But then you go to other localities, and they have a center. And a center makes great sense. For example, I believe Private Swore City has a center. And to think about their geographic region, it's a much smaller location in terms of mileage. And so having a centrally located facility does make sense in that venue. It is definitely dependent on the grant owner and the school. So it's a real mix.
Have you guys, I mean, I know it's, because I know it's huge county, but if you think of like Bowling Green is probably the most centralized area. Have you guys thought about a center here?
We have. An option two, we actually have the pre-K center going to the school board.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And how much did the cost to renovate it to do that?
When you look at the cost to renovate the school board office, it would be, and please, I'm afraid if I'm off, but it looks like it would be one point four million dollars. No, take that back, Martha.
It would be three point one million dollars to renovate the school board office, option two, or option one B, sorry. And that does not include the deferred maintenance.
How did we get to all of this deferred maintenance? Well, I think I asked when you made your board presentation, there's no maintenance repairs in this operating budget, correct?
Maintenance repairs, like everyday just generic maintenance repairs, isn't in the operation budget. But when you're talking large system repairs, they're not in the operation budget. And it's requested on our capital improvement budget.
But this didn't happen last year, it's been happening over the last ten, twenty years.
Correct, correct. As the buildings are aged, certainly, you know, like CMS, that HVAC system was the original equipment. That was the reason it was, you know, replaced or requested to be replaced. So what Stevens is passing out now is our CIP history.
During our leadership period.
So we'll have, we, and on the back are just large items that I have put in there that had been CIP. It's certainly not all details because they're like this month, this year, our CIP history request is twenty-one pages. So I certainly didn't put all that, I put the large item pieces on there. In there, you will see for ethical infrastructure or replacement needs, there's really only the CMS project in there that has been funded for those large infrastructural deferred maintenance over the seven years. So for, and there was a change of how we were also requesting the capital improvement. So you'll see a large increase in F five twenty-four where we started looking long range in the capital plan.
Additionally, I do think it's important that a part of the increase that you are seeing, we, of course, through COVID, had the opportunity to use extra money to do studies and to support deeper, more robust funding. And so that was educating our submissions. But simultaneous to that, I think we could collectively agree that there was a mindset when I inherited, not inherited, but applied and was blessed to achieve this position, that we submit a basic budget that's achievable, right? And we've been told, I've been told that as a superintendent, don't go pay on this guy, that's not reasonable. But we are ultimately charged by the Code of Virginia to submit a needs-based budget. And over the years, the board has advised me to operate in that fashion. And so you will see that that is absolutely what had occurred associated with capital improvement, with some of the increases, being more inclusive and being more demonstrative of the infrastructure need.
Can I repeat the question that I've been asking the last five years? Would you be willing to let the county take over maintenance of your buildings?
Well, Mr. Thomas, I am happy to come to the table and have greater dialogue associated with that. We started the conversation on a much smaller scale to talk about grant. And if you recall, we met with county administration, we ran those numbers, and it was not advantageous to the county, so that did not proceed. But there was no movement beyond that associated with any other topic.
Let's talk buildings because deferred maintenance, it's like my first car. I never changed the oil. My engine blew up on the Jersey Turnpike. I didn't know. There was a HVAC system in the school system where it needed special care that wasn't done, and it blew up. So I don't want to, it's like the old commercial, you can pay me now or you can pay me later. I want to be the one paying now because a can of oil is going to be a lot cheaper than an engine later on.
So I would counter that, and I don't know that this is a rabbit hole that we want to dare dive into this evening, but I think if I am interpreting your comment correctly, there is, whether intentional or unintentional, maybe an insinuation of lack of maintenance care. And that is not always what deferred maintenance.
Don't, don't even go there.
Different maintenance is your regular maintenance and aging infrastructure, just like homeownership. We need a new roof, we need new windows. Those are large-scale purchases that must be planned for. And we're demonstrating clearly, we go from one point two million requests to a one point five million request, to a three point two million request, to a four million, to seven million, to forty-six, I can't, I'm black, I'm blind, forty-five million, to thirty-six million, to forty-one million. And we have received, over the time period, the amount of five hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven, seven, eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand. Our highest was one point nine, seven hundred eighty-six thousand. And then, of course, the eleven million, that includes the HVAC work, of which we had over seven million that we contributed. So you can see what the deficit is of our request. And so I dare say, we need to work together to address deferred maintenance. It can't be all done tomorrow, for sure, but we've got to do better.
And I agree one hundred percent. But what I said before in the past five years, and talked about it, your core expertise is education. Anytime you have to spend time other than education, you're taking away from education. So if you've got your staff worried about maintenance, they're not taking care of education in that time. The county, the county can probably maintain all of your buildings and our buildings based on the economy of scale at a, at a better price than we do individually. That's all I'm saying. I am saying that there are maintenance things that should have been done, but when we give you money for your operating budget and you have a choice of teacher raises or a new roof, that's your call. If I'm doing the maintenance, my call is going to be, I have to do this new roof some kind of way.
Well, I don't believe the statement that was just made is accurate nor fair.
Okay.
But I will say that has to be a legitimate effect. And when you look at what we've received through capital improvement, and then you reduce the amount that we receive at the cost of buses on an annual basis, we are lack of nominal funds to do large-scale work. What is left is what can be done to do small roof patching, small, large-scale projects can't be done on what we're funded on an annual basis for experience. And that's what that means.
But Mr. Cully, all of their requests are in our CIP for this year? Their, their maintenance costs for this year are in, are in the CIP?
Recommended to be funded?
Are they in the CIP?
They, about thirty-seven million worth of new requests or thirty-three requests.
Are these the true requests that are on the back?
We reached a forty-one million dollars worth of capital improvement fund this year. Is there going to be much that we plan to receive this year?
I don't remember that number off the hand, but the biggest number is buses. So we also have staff computers, things we normally.
Under, correct. No infrastructure projects that you approved from our.
Unless we borrow the money, I do.
But if I may, if we could just kind of, and this is beautiful, but it's not getting us to where we need to be. We, you've asked us what our choice can be because of you. And I guess at this point, we need to hear from you what you would do.
So I'd ask one, ask one thing for your case, because I got that call tomorrow as well with Wasteland Village about that. My question is going to be then, if you said it's a hundred thousand dollars for trailer, how many trailers are we looking at in the county? Like, how many would we be, would we put into school plays?
Well, that number would change each year based on enrollment. And so our short-term plan in here is zero to three. So we would have to sit down, if that is a decision that we were to make, we would have to sit down, and we would have to draw an estimate based on our enrollment numbers and our predicted enrollment numbers because we have a pattern in two of our school magisterial districts. We have a pattern of enrollment the week that school is about to begin. And so those numbers escalate greatly that very last week itself. And so because of that, you would need to do a predictive estimation. And at Bowling Green, the number would be, the number would be greater to begin than Lewis and Clark if we were to implement some of those alternative strategies I mentioned, such as, of course, resource classes on the park. And we would need to determine, is that, as the juice works, is we, are we running the risk of teacher departure to other localities because they're on the park? Or do you want to pay for it as an alternative?
How many students for trailer?
That's right, yes, sir.
And I don't know if this, maybe I have wrong information, but I thought there was something in Lewis and Clark that said we couldn't do trailers.
That's why we're meeting tomorrow, we've got to meet virtually. And what, nine thirty, yes. So we're going to talk about that with our, because they have, they have, like you said, there's an agreement with the county with what they can, what we can get on the property there. there's an agreement with the county with what they can, what we can get on the property there. So.
And my own personal opinion is I hope we can't.
That's what I see.
Because I just do not want to see any trailers anywhere in this town. Personally.
And I think we all would agree, Mr. Keller, except for time is time and you never know with constructions. It's like building a house. They might tell you it's going to be three months and it ends up being six months. And then if you have to temporarily, you have to. But before we adjourn, and I think we're all getting tired, and it is time to, to wrap this up. I want to say, I think since we have a possible solution in a timely manner for, for Bowling Green, we need to move forward and look at the addition of six classrooms. Do we have plans? What's the cost going to be? What's the time factor? And, but.
We call a firm or architect engineer firm to just talk about those six classrooms. So we all have an idea as to what that might entail. And then certainly, I think the county has firms that we've been associated with in the past as well.
Right. The first thing was we need to find the plans so that they have something to sit down and work with. But for solving the problem, not looking at the big dream of one, two, three, four new schools, we need to get more classrooms for, for the elementary and for pre-k. So that would be something that may work out that could be done in a short period of time. I think it's worthwhile investigating.
So the six classrooms would probably, construction-wise, would be about 3.1 million in construction. My, my question about the drawings would be how complete they are and what year they were done. Because they're probably not code compliant.
Correct. They'd have to be, they'd have to be redrawn.
I'm sure they'll have to be updated because the school has some age on it.
If they were fully designed, but they're 15 years old, 10 years old, it could take them 45, 60 days maybe just to get them code compliant, if you have the same engineer, insane architect. And then you could be obligated. And I would agree that you could probably do 7, 8,000 per foot addition in nine, 12 months, structural months. So 15, 12 months total. If you have a set of drawings and a reason, but.
But that still doesn't address the issue of if you increase Bowling Green, I, I agree with that. But that still doesn't increase for your major population. You'd have to, this is, is, is over in Madison and, and Lewis and Park.
Right. But we're not going to be able to, I'm sorry, this, this, but I guess the point I was making is this is something we could do relatively fast while we decide and work on other projects. I wasn't saying not to do others.
I would like to have a better understanding as to how to proceed in relation to options. One A, one B, one C specific to property P, but also we need to understand if there is other property to lease in that, in option two available in the county. I need to be able to go back and determine, do we invest funds in a property attorney in order to continue to pursue that and the viability of that? And I, and I need that specifically from my board, but if that is not something that the board supervisors will support, then that's done in vain. And so I, I do think, while I don't disagree, I think Mr. Sealy's suggestion sounds like it, it may be reasonable and feasible. I think that's also becoming potentially siloed into one scenario. I think we owe it to ourselves to look at some larger options that can result more than just one matter. And so I just challenge you to be open to that mindset and to maybe have a bit more dialogue right now. Because as of right now, I still don't walk, I, I'm not walking away with any other specific action stuff, but to know that we're going to look at its patterns for Bowling Green.
But it gives us a start. It gives us a start now, and that's part of one of your needs. And it's something we can probably afford to pay for and do in a relatively short period of time. The rest of the additions that are needed are going to take a lot of engineering and a lot more money. And I'm looking at what could we do in the short term with, because, I mean, I know that it's been kicked around to do a referendum. But the cost of that is, is taxpayers' burden. And sometimes I think we for, as a group, forget that it goes to the taxpayers. And it's a tremendous amount of money. I mean, you're talking about a 40% increase in the tax rate to just do maybe even more than that, the lowest end of this, which I, I don't know that we can do now. I mean, and our ability to borrow is just not there.
If I can, if I could add to that.
Yes, Mr. Black.
Thank you. It would be nice on our end, you guys put a lot of information out there. It would be nice on our end, Mr. Cully, if we got like, for example, if we're going to borrow 10 million. And if, if, so we're going to go with 10 million or 20 million or 30 million, up to, I see as much as 90 million. How much like that would finance for? How much we would have to increase taxes by? So that way we know. And then in addition to that, what does that affect a homeowner? Because the homeowner who, you know, the kid, the homeowner that has kids in school, of course, most of them are going to be poor. And I understand that. But then the people that don't are obviously going to fight against it. So we need to know like on a $300,000 house, on a $400,000 house, on a $500,000 house, what is a three cent tax increase, a four cent tax increase, a five cent tax increase to finance some of this stuff? That would be beneficial on our end to look at and say, here's our graphic organizer. It says, here is what it would cost the county taxpayer. Because right now, what's that? Yeah, yeah, just throwing up the, I mean, we're, we're throwing out numbers. I don't know what the numbers are. But yeah, so, I mean, that would be, what is, what is the financing cost? And then in addition to that is like, I mean, because Mr. Sealy is right on the borrowing. However, the borrowing, from my understanding, from Davenport and Company, was based on the fact that we don't increase revenue. So I think the borrowing amount can go up if you increase revenue. But I mean, I just, but I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't want to speak out of turn and say that I know everything here. I'm just saying like, there are, we just need to see all the facts ourselves before we make a decision. Mr. Taylor, I remember you being on this side. And I remember multiple times arguing with you about money for the schools. And you were, you were saying that the taxpayer can't pay for it, you know? And so we have, we have an obligation to both help you guys out and the taxpayer. Because we have elderly people that live in our community, people on fixed incomes that are struggling right now. And we don't know where the economy is going. And we also want to help you guys. We also want to make sure that for the future of the county, we don't want, I don't want kids in trailers. I don't. I really don't. But we, we, we've got to figure out what the financing costs are. Because that's, that's a thing that we don't know on our end.
I do think, if I remember correctly, I'll turn to Mr. Cully for verification, that when Davenport presented, and the timeline is just giving me right now, so it's something you could validate for us, that if we were to borrow $67 million over a 20-year period as a county, that the debt service associated with that would be $5.5 million. And that does equate to approximately a 10th century. That came from that evening. And so that maybe gives you some of that information. Then maybe Mr. Cully can provide a little more detail.
And if you do attend, I mean, I'm not saying that, but I remember Mr. Thomas putting out like, we had a, Mr. Thomas had a graphic organizer on, on the tax increase for a $300,000 home.
Golden Exalt Bridge.
Yeah, that's great. Yes. Sweet. I appreciate that. But I think that would have been like it was for a $300,000 house. I think the payment was $100, right? So anyway, but we'd, we'd have to figure out the math.
Right. Aspect that is concerning to me to, to solely look at the addition of Bowling Green, which I definitely want to investigate and want us to vet thoroughly. But I think it also delays our ability to look at our properties as potential, potential revenue generators that then in turn allow us to commit to other options. So we don't look at option one A, one option, option one A, B, C, or two. We can't move in looking at whether property sale is something that we want to do as a board, as a community. And so we're taking all of that ability to use those aging buildings. And we're saying, okay, we are indeed going to accept a deferred maintenance. And we are going to not base plans to address that. And as Mr. Thomas said repeatedly at our last check meeting, he said, so off the gate, out of the gate, we're already in the first three years owing 32 or 33 million of deferred maintenance. And indeed, that is the case. So I, I don't want us to be shortsighted in not accusing anyone of being that. I just would encourage us to look holistically rather than just a narrow focus.
And I appreciate you saying that. However, as we said earlier, some of the stuff we need to discuss needs to be done in closed meetings. I, we're not going to give you an answer tonight. It's a great presentation. We all know things need to be done, but you all need to talk. We need to talk. We haven't had our budget presentation yet. So, you know, just, and, and this is, of course. Yeah, I know this is way beyond that, but still, we have other things we have to do. So you know how that goes.
But I just, and if we, we probably know, as you say, but the only thing we're really covering out tonight was just an idea for Bowling Green. Can we at least come up with a date when we will know something different? I mean, you know, and I'm certainly not.
Mr. Taylor, what life is definite other than life and death? Let us check calendars and we will have our closed meeting. And then can I contact you or? And see, but we've got to get our budget done first and set our tax rate. You know how that goes.
And I understand that. But if we don't, if we don't get an anticipated date, we will look up in a month or a half.
We're going to have a close meeting discussion about this. I'm not too.
Do you want to tell them that or do you want? So we don't need to get the close.
First, not on this. Now that was, yeah.
I mean, at least we're sure of that because next year. Because there is no other building in the county unless we convert a warehouse into a school, which I don't see happening.
I don't know of any.
There was no other. Available square footage. Now they, Louise and, and this Sears can, Louise did a really good job of creating a trailer, a temporary trailer area fenced, nice, new stuff. And they're also constructing an addition. I think they did it as far as outside looking in, looks, looks nice. As nice as you can make a trailer look. If that building is off the table, we're going to really look at that, unfortunately. They did that?
Yes, they did. Louise, Louise.
So it, I, I drove by a few weeks back and I was like, oh, that's very nice for what it is. But.
They made a warehouse?
They made a warehouse. Then they made a trailer.
Trailer.
Learning trailer.
Learning cost.
Learning cost.
And if I may, Dr. Fields, go ahead.
We have been in the weeds of this for some time. And I think it's done a good job of getting all the public with data. And then what we charged superintendent with was taking our priorities and moving those public pieces to public options. Tonight, I'm hearing the supervisors have other options. So in the next meeting, yes, a date or a timeframe. But I think it's also important to say, what are we coming back to the table with? I would like to hear those pieces that you all have, I think it was mentioned the proper or the PGB piece, or is there lands from our house? And say, here are other cases to the public. And then we come together as a collective board and say, you all know the programming needs and rules to make it fit and we collectively decide or have a conversation dealing with those options that we have not considered. But I do think because one of these options is time-sensitive. For me, I hear your question, we need to make a decision. Because right now, we have invested a certain amount of time, resources to see if it's viable. We need to decide, are we going to continue to pursue that or not? Before it's not an option, where we are in this, where it could be. So we need to move forward and learn with this to continue to make sure that it's not something that's off the table and then it's a missed opportunity. And in the meantime, if the county could say, we heard what you got, let's talk about what we have. Then I think we move the ball. So then you all know more about what you have. I certainly don't want us to be in a position to speak out of turn, what we think. We need to let you all be the, listen to you on what you have.
And I did, right. And I, I know you all said you wanted to have a, a closed meeting. We do not, check, Mr. Cully said, we do not need to. We can discuss this, but it does not need to be in closed session.
We can't discuss what you want it all about, but we can't, the, the six board members can't talk about something. Your term sheet. So we don't know. I'm just saying, she said we were going to have a closed meeting to discuss it, meaning the board of supervisors. We have nothing we can get underneath of. If we, the two boards want to have a closed meeting with our attorneys present to talk about their term sheet, that's a different story. We don't have anything as a board of supervisors that we can talk about as far as what's, what we want to do with building a new school or additions or any of that. That's all open discussion. The only reason the schools were talking about a closed session is to do basically with term sheet type things that would need to be in closed session. And we're not part of any of that unless we're in closed session with them. Because we're not in any option to buy or purchase anything. So we, we can't get under, we can't get into closed session. I just want to make sure that was clear to the public. We're not going into closed session to talk about what we want to, what options we want for schools moving forward or any of those kinds of things. Because that's all open session discussion. And while I'm talking, I still would encourage you to do all of your due diligence with maybe more than one partner or more than one person with that, because it's a group. And I'm being told that that's under contract.
We understand. And we have communicated this evening.
Perfect.
And they said yes?
We have received an affirmative response that we should continue to pursue the property.
I would, say again.
Attorney and then possibly that will bring closure to that.
I would, I would.
Whether it's favorable for, for just, we need to know where we stand.
Right. Because to, to me, you're expending time and resources on something that we're being told is not an option. So that would be, that's why I'm encouraging you.
And in the meantime, we will continue to move on with what we need to do and think about this void over all these things. We'll get you together a list that you asked for. Mr. Hughes can help with that as to what options are out there. We've already talked about the one Mr. Sealy spoke of. And then you'll have a list of things to consider for most also.
The tour of the community center to verify whether or not there's any available space for Bowling Green. Because I do think if there is space that we could utilize.
I don't know of any total vacant space, the, the far end in the basement floor down there where the area agency on agent runs programs is, but I don't know how often they're in there. But the rest of the building is, I got, there's, you know, just a couple of little offices that you can barely turn around in right behind here. And this room's used. Obviously, you couldn't have it because E O C, sheriffs, backup, dispatch, all those kinds of things. There really, there's really no space anywhere.
So there is no space at the community center.
There's, there's every agency, what do you call that, Mr. Thomas?
Area for agents.
R triple A. R triple A. Yeah, I think they're still in there. They still run, they still run programs in there. And I think it's, I've been in it a couple of times. There's maybe a couple of classroom size down there. That's it. On that lower level, under the library. And then there's, all the whole second floor is all social services. I mean, it's full. And they got offices in everywhere. So yeah, it's not what you're all using in the gym, you know.
It was one other question item that I'd like to reflect in that is a conversation about CIP, because I don't think you're actually questioning cancer. So for a different conversation.
I see, I think I'm kind of used to it. I've grown accustomed to this point.
I want to, I hear you. I'm listening for, just like earlier, a little bit more conversation providing a lot of clarity. I think you asked a good question and it was pertinent. We didn't have the time to go further in detail, but that is a question that's all the community and it's more rigid.
And, and, and I know you understand, but I want to make the document out there. A lot of the deferred maintenance issues were before you. And I know you understand, I want to make sure, Dr. Cal, a lot of the deferred maintenance issues were before you got here, or probably most of the people on the school board were here. It's one person. It's the shoemaker's. We need to do better jobs.
John Calhoun.
Always. That's all I'm saying.
And I want to turn back. Personally, because that's what I asked. And so that's why we began to track. I think there's a lot of confusion, I think, I don't think that the public has a understanding of topics we have been brought to work. Well, and it's not towards today, but it does mean the conversation. I will say, just for the community's awareness, when we began the new division, there were many other avenues for communication regarding capital improvement. We were meeting more regularly with the county team. We met specifically with Mr. Fincham and went through a full presentation there. We went to the planning commission, and we presented CIP to them. We then had an opportunity to present to you. We have not had one of those opportunities this year. So I'm not even sure you have seen our CIP plan, which we have the presentation here to give you.
Not tonight.
Pardon me, not to give you a hard copy.
They might have a few of the hard copies.
We also aren't doing two-on-two meetings, where that was also discussed. So many of the vehicles for communication that we have asked for and or were in place are no longer in existence. And so that is part of a lack of awareness and a lack of planning. And so I urge us all to be more open to multiple models of meeting, because it is something that I think will help us avoid these types of situations during not only my tenure, but those of the other.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second, a discussion on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Colbert?
Adjourn. Aye, aye.
Thank you.